Good evening. I'm so glad you're all here tonight. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. So at this time, I will call to order the City Council. City Council as a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority of the City of Grand Terrace for the regular meeting of July 23rd, 2019. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor Arturo Sanchez of the Living Word Inland Empire Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be given by former Senator and our current county assessor, Bob Dutton. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you for this beautiful place that you brought us this afternoon. Father, I pray that you just bless this meeting. I pray for unity, that everybody will work together here. As I lift up the mayor and the city councilman, Mary and Jeff, that I met today, Father God. Father, I lift up the coaches, I lift up the parents that are doing such a great job with these kids, because these kids are the future generation. I pray blessing upon the city of Grand Terrace. I pray that everybody will work together, that we'll come together as one team, and that you'll bless everything and that you'll open new doors for new things, for greater, bigger, and better things, Father God. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Senator. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Proton Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magnobo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of special presentations tonight. We're going to start tonight, though, with the San Bernardino County Assessor and former Senator Bob Dutton. He is here tonight to talk to us about the current tax roll data, and he tells me that he's got a wonderful bit of news to tell us. So thank you so much for being here.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and citizens of Grand Terrace. I want to thank you for this opportunity to give you a report, more or less, of what's happened here in the county and the city of Grand Terrace. I would like to take a couple of minutes, though, I'll tell you what my presentation's going to pertain to, will tell you a little bit about the history of the assessor. The one thing I found out when I first ran for the assessor, a lot of people were confused about what exactly the assessor is and does. We'll talk a little bit about what my responsibilities are, but we'll also give you the latest assessment data as far as property values and where they've gone. I also have a special report for the city of Grand Terrace, and I'll also give you, like, a 10-year history of what's happened, so you can see what the trend's been. Also, when I was elected the assessor, the county charter does also make me the elected recorder for the county. I'll give you just a brief little numbers on the recorder's office. And then also, to my surprise, I was also made the director of the historical archives for the county, and I have a special surprise regarding that as well. What I want to do, first of all, is tell you a little bit about the history of the assessor. The history of the assessor actually goes back to 6,000 B.C., back to the days of the pharaohs. And back in ancient Egypt, we basically were called scribes. We kept the records for the pharaoh on who owned land, the size of their fields, the amount of livestock, chickens, trees, whatever. But also, back in those early days, the assessor was also the tax collector, so they had two functions. And a lot of times, they were actually paid a percentage of the amount of taxes they were paid as well. Now, one thing that was kind of interesting, or not interesting, but was the practice of the early days, when the pharaoh would pass away, they generally would bury a lot of people with the pharaoh alive to care for the pharaoh after death and to serve them in the afterlife. Well, that was everybody but the assessor. Okay?[318.12][318.12](Laughter) Because, see, the assessor knew too much. The assessor, we didn't have any computers or any kind of logs showing all this data that the assessors had, but they were the ones that knew who owned what, but they also were pretty good at collecting money, too. And of course, the new pharaoh wanted to have that same person to also help him, because government does need, unfortunately, taxes to be able to provide services to the people. So was the case back in those 6,000 B.C. Also might point out, too, that one of the 12 apostles was actually a tax assessor, that was Matthew. And so there is quite a history, you know, regarding the assessor's office. Now, let's go ahead and fast forward to 1850, when California became a state. The Constitution of California was written to provide that certain offices had to be elected positions in the county. That was the county assessor, the district attorney, the sheriff, and a local governing body, the Board of Supervisors. Now, like all other cities and counties, you do have the option, if you want to become a charter city or a charter county, where you can actually create other elected positions. And that's what happened in San Bernardino County as well. We have more than just those four requirements. In 1853, the San Bernardino County was created. It used to be parts of, well, it consisted of parts of Los Angeles, San Diego, and Mariposa Counties. And today, my role, I don't collect taxes, but today I do have some additional duties and responsibilities. But this is a San Bernardino County organizational chart. Obviously, it starts with the people of San Bernardino County. They're the ones that empower everybody else to do their job for the people. And we do have myself, and then Ensign Mason, who's your auditor, controller, tax collector. We have county council, which is an appointed position, clerk of the board, which sometimes gets confused with me as the county clerk. The clerk of the board, really, if you're going to sue the county, that's who you really want to go sue, not me. I don't, I'm not in that, I just have to refer it over to them and so forth. And then, of course, we have District Attorney Jason Anderson, and then John McCannon, who's our county sheriff. We also have other department heads. Gary McBride's our new chief executive officer, and these others, positions, they all serve at the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors. Now, in the early years, the assessor covered the entire county by horseback. And believe me, San Bernardino County's a big county to cover even by car. We're one of the largest, well, we are the largest county in the United States, but we're also bigger than most states. As a matter of fact, my home state of Nebraska, where I was born, has a population of 2 million people, which is the actual population of San Bernardino County. But back in those early days, too, we were, I was also charged with the responsibility of being the superintendent of schools, the registrar of voters, and also kept a list of all persons subject to military duty. Now, back in 1862, that's from our Archives Division, that particular assessor, he was kind of a, that's actually Willard Hughes, he was kind of a, he liked to do self-portraits, and that's a self-portrait if he did it himself. When you take a look at his actual logbooks, his assessor books, he'll have pictures of cows in there, birds, things like this, and so it's kind of an interesting log that he kept. But that's an example of what we also have down in our Archives Department, we do have those original documents. Now, today, what the San Bernardino County Assessor is responsible for is my responsibility to locate and identify all taxable properties, both real estate as well as personal, and to determine who the ownership is. And I have to keep a log of all those property records. I have to establish, I'm required by law to establish the fair assessed value of all those properties, because that becomes the basis of which your property tax, general property tax liability will be determined, is based on that value. I do complete the annual roll, which we just did, July 1st, and that's a statutory requirement. I have to complete that roll by that date. But then we also do three supplemental rolls every year, too, to reflect activities that happen during the year until we do the next assessment roll. Now, what I don't do, I do not send out tax bills, I do not collect taxes, and I have nothing to do with those little assessment districts that you see on your, it may say "assessment district," but it has nothing to do with the assessor. That has something to do with something else. Now, I do have a typical tax bill, this happens to be from my hometown of Ranch Cucamonga. That top line up there is the only line that really has, primarily has anything to do with the property value that is established on your property. All those other items are landscape districts, they could be community facility districts, we got Shafie College Bond on there, Edwanda Elementary Bond, we got a state school repayment, various types of bonds and so forth. The next line over there, it was, the header says "contact." If you do have a question about those assessment numbers, you should call that phone number, because that's the agency that's responsible. Now, if you do call our office, and a lot of times people do, to complain about things or ask questions, my office does have knowledge about this, but we really do have to refer you to these other agencies, because we really don't have the detail. There is one item on here, I'll bring to your attention, and that was the HERO program that used to be administered by Sandbag. As you'll notice, that's a pretty sizable number. There has been a great deal of confusion about that program. It was intended to provide money for people to upgrade their homes. I did, I was contacted by two veterans here just about a month ago, and after telling, and that particular item, when a call comes in regarding that, it usually will come directly to me, because there, again, our office has nothing to do with it, but I don't like the idea of people being referred all over the county and just, you know, not get answers that they should have. I listened to their story, I kind of felt, I did refer them to the Real Estate Fraud Department of the District Attorney's Office, who we do work with, because it just, some things didn't make sense, what they were telling me. And I felt that somebody from the DA's office should take a look at their paperwork, what was being represented to them, because I was afraid that there may have been some, they may have been taken advantage of. And so I will do that. If I feel like there's something, a taxpayer's been misled or something, I will try to refer them to somebody to make sure they get the straight answers. Now, I want to give you some information regarding what's happened here in San Bernardino County. We have over 814,067 taxable parcels. Now, I only have an appraisal staff of 65, so trying to look at the value of 814,000 parcels is quite a task, especially, we start that January 1st, and we have to have it completed by July 1st. And so that's quite a workload we have in the first six months. The value here in San Bernardino County is now at, once again, a new high. We have a total value of over $234 billion. We experienced a countywide average increase of 5.8%, and that's during 2018. We call this the 2019 roll, but we actually, it's for transactions and activities that took place during the calendar year of 2018. Okay? So this reflects what's happening. Here is a, we did, I had them do a historical trend for San Bernardino County, it goes from 1978 to present. As you can see, when you get to, oh, about two-thirds of the way up, you'll see that peak that hit there, and then all of a sudden, a sudden drop. Well, that was 2009, that was the recession that hit us. And so obviously, it caused a steep decline in property values, but as you can see, we've more than recovered from that setback in 2009. The year, the numbers for the 2019 assessment roll, the increases in value were roughly about 41% due to transfers, people selling their properties, things of that nature. We also had the Proposition 13, which gives you protections on making sure your property taxes can't be raised, you know, severely or horrifically, and so, but there is an inflationary judgment, adjustment that takes place. That number comes down from the Board of Equalization, I think last year it was just under 2%. I know two years ago it was about 1.5%. So that will be what those adjustments are. We also had a lot of property values restored from Proposition 8. Proposition 8 was passed by the voters after Prop 13. It gave us the ability to actually reduce property values, like what happened in 2009. We were able to reduce the property tax liability by allowing us to reduce the value of the property. Now, the one negative thing about that is that, where you could reduce, and we did see it out in the high desert, where we saw 70% reductions in property values. That's only good for one year. So the next year bounces right back to what it was before unless we again do a Prop 8 review, which we have been doing. When I first took office in 2014, we had almost 300,000 properties, parcels still on Prop 8 reviews. We're now down to about 60,000, and most of those are out in the high desert. High desert in this county is always going to be the last to rebound, and it's usually the last to grow and the last to rebound, it's just the way it kind of works, similar to what it is for San Bernardino County. We follow LA and Orange County, so we need them to prosper in order for us to prosper. I have some specific information here regarding the role for the city of Grand Terrace. You had a secured value of over $1.1 billion, that shows a 6.8% increase over the prior year. Your unsecured value, which is mostly the business property valuation, that showed a 5% increase, it's now valued over $20 million. So a combined increase of $1.1 billion for a 6.7% increase over the last, over the last 10, or the last year. This here also is an assessment, this is a 10-year trend that I wanted to do for the city of Grand Terrace. It starts back in 2009 at the recession, and then it shows the progress it's made with regards to property values. I will caution everybody, property values, the values that are determined by the assessor's office to be your property value should not be mistaken with the true market value of the property. That's a lot different. Because of Prop 13, you have some protections, and if you've got people that own properties for a long time and so forth, you may find that, and we'll even be a little disclaimer at the bottom of our website, that our numbers should not be used to determine the, you know, fair market value of the property. So it shouldn't be confused with that. But any case, as you can see from the 10-year trend, things are looking pretty good, we're showing some nice gradual increase. I was in the real estate business, commercial industrial, for 50 years in the area, and I like to see these types of trends because it shows stability to me. And at least that's what it would tell me as an investor, so. Now, we'll go on to talk a little bit about, oh, you can actually, any information I gave you tonight, you can go to our website and our blog, and all this is available online to the public. And then if any questions come up, you can certainly call us, and my staff will be more than happy to help anybody understand what they're looking at. Also, too, when you get your, parents, when you get your assessment notices, if you kind of feel it's wrong, if you feel your value's too low, for an example, you want to have it increased, you can call us. I'm just kidding, obviously. Yes, I wasn't intended to be a joke. However, if you do feel their value is stated too highly, too high, keep in mind, I've only got 65 appraisers to do over 800,000 parcels. Don't be bashful, call the office, won't cost you anything, you just ask them to do a review of your, to make sure that, because it's important for me, and it's what I've told my office, we need to make sure that the people feel they've been treated fairly, and they got a square deal from the assessor's office. And I always want to make sure that people feel they've been treated fairly. Now, as I pointed out, too, I knew, I knew when I was running for office, I was also going to be the recorder, because I knew how they amended the county charter. I didn't know anything about the county clerk at the time, but that was an added duty. But to give you an idea of what we do in the recorder's office, we recorded over 460,000 documents. A lot of those had to do about real estate transactions or transfers, loans, things of that nature. We issued over 9,600 marriage licenses, we married over 4,100 couples here in San Bernardino County, we also issued over 91,000 certificates, and we filed over 14,000 fictitious business name statements for business startups and things of that nature. One of the things that's kind of interesting about what goes on in the clerk's office is, you know, we do marriage ceremonies. And obviously, if I'd ask you, what do you think the most popular day to get married is? Is Valentine's Day, right? That would be what most people would say. Well, I got to tell you, what sometimes runs a very close second and sometimes outdoes Valentine's Day is Halloween.[1208.58][1208.58](Laughter) So, I don't know why. In the high desert, I remember going out there and visiting the people in the recorder and clerk's office out in the high desert. I showed up on Thursday, and there was like 200 people waiting for service, and that kind of concerned me a little bit. And so I asked the supervisor out there, what's this all about? And she says, "Oh, well, this is no appointment needed, it's Thursday." I said, "What do you mean, no appointment needed Thursday?" Well, these are all people waiting to get married. They didn't make an appointment, and they can just walk in. And so I thought, well, that's kind of interesting. Yeah, so, but anyway. The other surprise I had was being in charge of the Archives for San Bernardino County. Now, when I was in the City Council Ranch Cucamonga, I made a project of mine to do an oral history program, so, because we had a lot of the founding families that were still there, because our city was incorporated back in 1978. And we thought we'd make a video record of, you know, oral history record of all the kinds of stories about what led to incorporation, things of that nature. I kind of went along the same lines here in San Bernardino County, because I said, "Wouldn't it be great to try to take a look and create a, some kind of a video record, digital record of the history of San Bernardino County?" And so that's what we've done. We have what we call our Throwback Thursday video series. It's all located, it is put out on social media. It highlights the local history, we're trying to do one on each of the cities, trying to highlight how they came to be a city, and maybe some of the interesting factors that might be it. We did one on needles, about how did needles get its name? And then we also talk about the Camel Brigade, they used to operate out in the high desert. Some people might have an interest in that. And then we also did for this video series, we did actually receive a NACO award for our work on this. We do have a little bit of a surprise for you tonight, and so we'll go ahead and show you what we did for Grand Terrace. Anyway, you can go to our website, and you'll find about 100 videos there about different things in San Bernardino County. The one that kind of launched everything, and I'm going to introduce Daniel Sanchez, the creator of our video series. So it's, Daniel's the one that has produced all this, but Zizik out there on the 15 freeway, when that one was produced, I got a call, and they said, "Well, hey, we had 2,000 hits on our video." And so, "Oh, that's great." And so about a few hours later, "It's up to 10,000." I said, "Oh, really?" And then it says, "Well, it's up to 20,000." I said, "Well, what's, when does it go, what's viral mean, then? When does it get to that?" Well, we have 3.2 million hits on that one, and it's actually what kind of launched everything. What I think is good about it, and the reason why I'm so excited about this, and I go back, kind of back to my real estate background, it's just a fantastic way of promoting San Bernardino County. And there's a lot of great things that are happening here right now. I'm not, as the county assessor, it's not my job to do economic forecasts or anything like that, but we now are in a position where we control our own destiny with the Ontario International Airport, with San Bernardino Airport, with now Chino, there was some legal problems there. But those are all going to create great opportunities to create jobs for people who live here, especially new jobs. One thing I will remind everybody, one of the, unfortunately, one of the requirements of law is that the business property owners have to file statements every year. This is that unsecured. That has come up, and you'll get a letter from my office. If you get one, please don't ignore it. That won't do you any good.[1634.64][1634.64](Laughter) And in fact, if you get a letter from any government agency, I would not suggest you ignore it, because no good will come out of that. They're just looking for information, and if you don't supply it, then unfortunately, they'll have to make their own best guess, and you may not like their guess. But that is coming up, it's due, the due date is April 1st of every year, and it's delinquent by May 7th. And we're going to be doing more to help the business community make sure they're in compliance with it, because I don't want to see anybody get stuck on a technicality, so to speak. And we basically, it's for property owners, if you have 100,000 or more value, and that's what that's for. But any case, that is the end of my presentation. I do also have a couple of the additional people, Mark and Allen from the office. If any of the people have questions they'd like to ask us about their properties or anything, we will stay, stick around out in the lobby after my presentation. And I just once again want to thank you for allowing me to make this presentation, and may God bless.[1704.83][1704.83](Applause)
Sir? Will you speak into the microphone? Thank you. We want everyone to hear it.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, Mayor. I just want to congratulate all the players here and the parents. I spent nine years with my daughter's fast-paced softball team, and I got to tell you, I wouldn't have traded anything for those nine years. And it was the most enjoyment I had. I wish you all just a tremendous amount of fun. And remember, it's supposed to be fun, okay? But congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our county assessor, what a wonderful presentation. It was very nice to have you here tonight. We're going to move on to our next presentation, and we have some certificates to give out, because I understand we have some just highly skilled athletes in this city. So we're going to start with baseball, and I'm going to have Mark Romo come forward. We have certificates for each of the players. We have certificates for each of the players. Our certificates read, "In celebration of your 2019 All-Star District 21 Championship, Grand Terrace Little League Baseball, 9, 10, 11." And if you would, Coach Romo, would you please tell us a little bit about your season, and then help us with calling out the names of your players? And when you are ready to call the names of your players, the council members will come up here and will hand out the certificates and shake their hands, and then we'll end up over here for a picture.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank my coaches, Tommy Rivero, Ralph Royball, and special recognition to the team mom, Sandra Romo. Without her, you know, it would've been a tough one. She does a lot and she don't get no recognition, so I wanna clap it up for her. You know, this is a special group of boys. I have the privilege to be with them for the last three years with the All-Stars, and this group right here showed a lot of tenacity, a lot of hard work, a lot of brotherhood. We started in June, early June, and we practiced five days a week for two to three hours, pretty much. And, you know, it was hard on the parents. They took sacrifices away from a lot of things to be there, and, you know, it showed out in the ball field. We started our tournament, District 21, out in Kennebbs. We went 4-0, and we won the championship game there, 23 to 1. And they turned the scoreboard off on us, so we were trying to get out of there. We next went to Hesperia to play in the sectionals. We played Citrus, Spring Valley, Victorville, New Mark, San Bernardino, and Citrus again. We went 2-2. We were in the championship game. We had to win twice. It was a tough battle. You know, a lot of us still dealing with it, so I'm gonna be brief on that one. But, I will say this about the boys, there was a point in the game, we were down 13 to 3, and I looked at them and I said, "Hey, you know what? Let's not go out of here like this. Let's go down fighting." And in the sixth inning, we put up 10, went up to 13-10. So, we were just one hit away. But these boys are a special group, and I appreciate you recognizing us today, and that's all I got. Clap it up, little boys.
Let's see, what's the best way to do this? We have those up there? Okay. Do we have a microphone for the coach? Okay. And so, let's have council members come out here, so we can shake their hands as they come up to get their certificates.
Coach Tommy Rivero. Coach Ralph Royball. Jason Alvarado. Charlie Berry. Don McBishop. Big Dom. Mayor, I'd like to say, three home runs. Three home runs. Big Dom. Connor Burns. Chad Christian. Angelo Douglas. Vasily Kazak. Liam Mir. Lucas Palos. Dominic Quidos. Nicholas Romo. Jaden Ross. Ray Royball. And not with us today, Andrew Pennelly's on vacation, so clap it up for him.
And Coach Romo, this is for you. And each of your players has received a pin with the city logo on it, so that you can wear that and show off your pride. Also, tonight, we have with us Third District Supervisor Dawn Rouse, field rep, and she has also brought certificates for the kids, correct? Yes. So, thank you very much. So, can we have another round of applause? And we would like to get a picture with all of the council members, with all of the players, so if you would come. All right, one more round of applause for our young men. We are also recognizing softball tonight. The 2019 All-Star District 21 Championship, Grand Terrace Little League Softball, 8, 9, and 10. And would Yvette Mezanato please come up?
Hello. I just wanna thank Grand Terrace Little League parents and coaches that helped support our All-Star team, and congratulations to the minor softball team for winning their district. And I would like to add, it's the first time since 2006. And a special thanks and appreciation to my girls for their hard work and dedication during the hottest four weeks of their lives, that prepared them for the hard, tough competition. Yeah, Alani's like, "Yes, it was the hottest ever." They never gave up, and they made adjustments when they faced the fastest pitchers, also in their first time in their lives, but they made the quick adjustments, never gave up. And this group of girls have so much talent on and off the field, and I can't wait to see them soar in the future. And I hope that they learn that they should never give up, no matter what challenges they face, not just on the field, but also off the field. And I am privileged to be your manager, and thank you again to all my coaches that were out there, I have so many. We had everyone out there and the parents for bringing your girls every day on those hot summer evenings. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, we will run the same theme here, and we also have, for all of our softball players, we have a certificate as well as the logo pin for the city of Grand Terrace. And Supervisor Rouse, field rep, will also give them each a certificate from the supervisor. First, present Brandon Mezanato. Michael Oram. And Melissa Asensio, who's actually not here today. Liliana Ardella. Alana Aradondo, which I believe is also not here. Getzali Barker. Aubrey Brown. Natalia Cabrera. Olivia Guevara. Alana Guzman. Harper Huxhold. Welcome. Alani Mahilo. Mia Mezanato. Isabella Miranda. Peyton Oram. Zay Prado. Her mom actually had her baby today, so... And Deanna Sandoval. Thank you. And Coach Mezanato, this is for you, and you also receive a pin, so that you may wear that and be proud of the city that you represent, because we are certainly proud of all of you. Thank you so much. One more round of applause for these young ladies. All right, we'll move on to our consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removals of items at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. A motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting no.
Thank you. I'll open public comment now, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. Do we have any requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Assessor Dutton for his presentation. Really excellent, really informative, learned a lot from it, and I have, I'm a big fan of the historical videos that his office puts out. They're really accurate, really interesting, and they're produced in a way that keeps your attention, so I highly recommend them. I'd also like to personally congratulate the Little League and the softball players on their achievements, and I wanna thank the coaches, and the parents, and the grandparents, and all the ones who make it possible for Little League to happen, and for kids, all the kids' activities that we have in our great little town. Since our last meeting, I've enjoyed the movies in the park, and I just wanna thank the staff for doing that again this year. I think that's just a great addition to our community, along with the swim. And I wanna say that I think it was a great idea having the Wednesday afternoon open swim to just invite people, you know, "This is your opportunity to..." You know, because I took advantage of that, and I think that's a great idea. So, thank you very much for providing that swimming for us, and for working so hard on our new community, possibilities for our new community pool at the middle school staff. Thank you for that. I also just wanna ask, I don't know if I'll get an answer or not, but you know, Los Angeles is, was, I read an article today in the LA Times, the city of Los Angeles is being sued because of speed limits not being up to date. And so, a lot of speeding tickets are being thrown out of court, and they're being ordered not to. And I just wonder, are our speeding, are our speed limits up to date on our streets? See, I don't need an answer, I'm just throwing that out there in my communications. When I hear about stuff like that, you know, and I read about stuff like that, and other cities are facing it, I don't want our city to deal with that, so, you know, up-to-date speed limits.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
I concur. Councilmember Allen, I'm thanking everybody, but, you know, congratulations for the Little League and softball. I remember this is where we all get a start, and that's why I started as a coach. One good thing about, you know, you're out there coaching those kids, but you end up becoming family with a lot of these kids and parents and stuff, so it's good times, good memories, and all those kids that I coached, and my friends, they're all adults and they have kids, so we get to see the next generation come up, but that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor, God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yes, Mayor, I'll just report that Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson, city manager and the city attorney, met last Monday with the mayor of San Bernardino and the city manager regarding the Orange Shore noise, and I will defer to the city manager on a report on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles, Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
I will agree. We did have a good, my impression of the meeting was that it was a very good meeting, with it, San Bernardino Mayor Villavilla had some very positive comments.
It is a project by SBCTA, and the light rail trains will be run by Omni-Trans. It's an interesting way that they have decided to create rail within this rail line that has long been quiet. They are using diesel multiple units, which are actually low emission, but they are, they actually have a grant to study a zero emission vehicle, and they are working on that right now. 2022 is the date that we've been given for when this will be ready, and the idea that is, there will be one MetroLink train that will be in Redlands in the morning, and people can get on that MetroLink and ride it all the way to LA if they so choose. And the other trains will take them into the station in San Bernardino where they can transfer to a MetroLink if that's where they want to go unless their final destination happens to be San Bernardino. Once again, I am just in awe of the wonderful parents that we have that have stepped forward to be coaches and the incredible athletic talent that we have in this city. And my congratulations to both the softball and the baseball teams, and thank you so much to the parents who stepped forward to make this such a wonderful place to live. And I will end there. We have no public hearings tonight, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, and our first item is the award. We're on item eight of our agenda, Award of Community Benefit Fund in the amount of $2,000 to the Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, Cynthia Fortune for the Finance Department. The staff report before you tonight is for the review and approval of a community benefit fund application. The staff report supports the following goals. Goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous review of grant applications received and develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community youth programs. Sorry about that. So we received one application in July, and this was from the Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters. So they actually proposed an activity, what they'd like to do is have an evening with the veterans of City Grand Terrace and the surrounding community. They entitled it Honor Our Veterans Event. It will be on Friday, August 23rd, at the Grand Terrace High School Football Stadium. And the purpose of their activity is to invite veterans in Grand Terrace and the surrounding area to dedicate an evening to honor them and thank them for their service. And they wanted the community to get involved so that they can meet the veterans in the surrounding community. They are applying for $2,000, and the use would be T-shirts for the veterans, food, a photo booth service, and they will also be providing a disc jockey that would be having music for this event. So to give a summary, when the budget was approved, we approved $15,000 for the community benefit fund. This will be our first award, should City Council approve this, and will give us a remaining balance of $13,000. So we do have representatives from the high school boosters, should City Council want to talk to them, and we also have one of the football players, the young gentleman is here, should City Council want him to come up and say anything about the event or have any questions.
I believe that we want them to come up, right?
Yes.
Please come up.
Councilmembers, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Coach Ostrowski, this is Jaden Wells.
Mary Beth Carrera.
Mary Beth Carrera, she's one of our booster board members. I'm a coach, and I'm also a veteran, so this is near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate you, the council, for considering this for our program. Any questions of us, we can answer.
Do we have questions of the applicant? Councilmember Hussey.
Let that young man speak, I want to hear about his position.
I play quarterback and corner. I enjoy playing football, I played all my life, and it's something that I enjoy to take things off my mind and, I mean, focus on school, obviously, but sports makes school more fun, if that's my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? All right.
I just have one other thing to say.
Certainly.
I really appreciate the effort that the community and that the board considers doing for veterans. I know we've done Veterans Night for a few years, I've been coaching for three years now, and like I said, as a veteran, I know Councilman Hussey is a veteran as well, and it's important to recognize those individuals that have given their service to our country, and I think it brings the community together. It's not just football players that are affected by it, it's other parents in the stands that are veterans, it's parents of the cheerleaders, the band members. And then we've also had a lot of former players of mine, and I've coached for over 20 years, all the way from youth up to high school now, and I have a lot of players that are now serving in the military, and it's an honor and privilege to have coached them, and it's an honor and privilege to meet them when they come down and they come on the field and they get recognized, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ostrowski, Mr. Wells, and Mrs. Carrera. Appreciate you being here tonight. And I think that Assistant City Manager was wanting us to recognize that Councilmember Allen is also a veteran.
I apologize.
And now you know that, but he will probably be there, so you'll have a chance to meet him.
We would love to have you.
All right.
And Mayor McNabb's husband's a veteran, and my husband is a veteran.
All right, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I'm going to open public comment, see if there's anybody that would like to speak on this item.
No, Madam Mayor.
Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I.
Councilmember Allen.
So I'd like to direct this either, I don't know, to you or maybe to the attorney. I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I just want to make sure, being a veteran, I want to attend the event. If I vote to approve this, do I need to abstain from benefiting from the?
That's true. Mr. City Attorney, will you weigh in on this?
I appreciate Councilmember Allen looking at, being concerned about conflicts of interest in this, because I do not see a conflict.
No conflict.
I do not see one.
Well, okay, so.
I appreciate you asking.
You earned your fee tonight. Thank you, sir. So, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion, then, that we award the community benefits fund the amount of $2,000 to the Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We look forward to seeing good things from our football team this year. Move on to item nine, resolution of the City Council establishing an expanded public notice and outreach policy for public hearings, public workshops, and directing city staff to process a zoning code amendment for projects subject to public hearings. Director Sandra Molina.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So this item before the City Council is to consider a public outreach and noticing policy. This item does promote City's goal, 2030 goal, number five, to engage in proactive communication. So in a previous council meeting back in March, the City Council did direct staff to look at expanded notification outreach efforts to ensure that the community members are informed of public hearings or public workshops so that they can attend and provide input on items of interest. And so staff is back this evening to make a recommendation to the council. So our existing code defers to the California Government Code when it comes to noticing for public hearings. The Government Code requires a public hearing, a notice to be mailed or delivered 10 days prior to a hearing date to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject property. And it requires notice to be published once in the local newspaper or posted in three public places, and the publication and the posting is also 10 days prior to the hearing date. The city does all three types of this noticing. And our application fees are deposit-based to ensure cost recovery, so the cost of the publication and the mailing is the responsibility of the applicant. So that's our existing standards, and it is the minimum requirement provided by the state law. But state law also says that the city can establish any other expanded notification requirements as it desires. And so staff has gone back and looked at different ways to be able to provide noticing. We do have public hearings, and hearings are a mandate by state law with regard to the minimum noticing requirements, but sometimes we'll do things like public workshops, or we call them community workshops, and there is no required noticing under state law for those type of community workshops. And so what we decided to do is, rather than try to establish a standard for public hearings and a different standard for community workshops, we decided just to combine it. That way, there's no ambiguity, we know that it's always the same process that we would follow based upon the council's desire. So we determined that it may be the best method is to base it on the size of the property. And so what we're suggesting, that based upon the size of the property, we would expand our notification requirements. So if the property is less than five acres, we would go from 300 feet to 500 feet, and the type of publication would be the standard legal advertisement, that's the legal notices you'll see at the back of the paper. If the project is five to 9.99 acres, then we would expand it to 1,000 feet. But in that instance, rather than the legal advertisement that's at the back of the paper, it would be a 1/8-page box ad. And so if you think of 1/8 as one half of a quarter of a page, that would be required to be published. And then, once it's 10 acres or more, then the notification would expand to 1,500 feet, and then again, the 1/8-page box ad. And so that's a recommendation that staff is suggesting that the council consider for public hearings and public workshop noticing. But also, these are, this would be the direct mailing and the publication in the paper, and of course, we would always post, but also for additional outreach efforts, staff is also just suggesting that the City Council consider these additional outreach efforts, such as posting on the website, on Channel 3, our social media pages, do the email blast of all persons that signed up for emails, and then also emailing for informational purposes to the council and the planning commission. So we would suggest that we have those additional outreach efforts. I do want to go back and just say that with regard to public hearing requirements, our zoning code does require public hearings for certain applications such as variances, CUPs, site and architectural reviews, and then our subdivision ordinance as well requires public hearing requirements. And so if the council were to want us to move forward with these notification suggestions or any changes that the council may direct us to, then we would also go back and amend our code. So staff's recommendation is to direct us to do a code amendment to reflect the recommended distant requirements and publications for applications subject to hearing, and also to adopt the attached resolution with respect to the requirements for public workshops, the increased outreach, and then also as an interim to the public hearing notifications until such time as we amend our zoning code and our municipal code. And so that's staff's recommendations, I'm happy to respond to any comments and welcome any input that the council could provide us.
Thank you. Director Molina, are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Director Molina. My only question is, if we, when the plot size increases, then the notice size increases in the newspaper, and so you go up to the 1/8-page box advertisement. And it sounds like you're moving it from the legal advertisement section of the paper to another page, and I'm wondering, will it, I just wonder, will it still fulfill the requirement to have a notice posted in the legal advertisement? By not posting on the page that says legal advertisement, but somewhere in the middle of the paper with an 8-page ad?
I believe it does, because the state law also gives us the option when notices are to 1,000 or more properties, that we can do the 1/8-page ad. However, we do have our city attorney sitting right next to you, and we can get him to.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, I don't believe the state statute specifies what section it's in, it only specifies the type of notice that's required.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further questions? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Are there requests to speak on this item?
Jeffrey McConnell, 217-58 Walnut Avenue. I remember standing here about 15 years ago, fighting with some other people to get just the legal notice in our local paper, Jim Margie's newspaper, City News. So I really appreciate everything that's been done to try and get the word out, and the social media certainly helps. But, and Grand Terrace doesn't have a whole lot of land left to develop, so the example I'm using is obviously something that my neighborhood is very involved in, on a, seems every other couple of years. But it's the distance, I went and mapped out on Google Earth how far 1,500 feet would go from the 20-acre parcel just to the north of me. And it does extend pretty well into the neighborhood, but it wasn't the footage that was concerning the impact. The impact was not just the footage, it was the roadways for heavy trucks. And as you know, there's been many complaints about our neighborhood always having 18-wheelers going through our neighborhood, and if some of you remember, one of them took out my Mercedes at four in the morning while I was sleeping at 3 mile an hour. So I don't know if there's a way to look at, for traffic impact, who would affect adversely, if that can be incorporated into that somehow, instead of just linear footage? Because obviously, and not just in my neighborhood, but trucking has been a concern, especially with High Grove being all their development, and a lot of their trucks coming through, flying through town also. So that was my concern, if there was a way to show where for trucking, if it would impact certain neighborhoods and streets and corridors, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Any other requests to speak, Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, the, I move items one and two on the agenda as recommended.
I second. It's a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to City Manager Communications. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor McNabb, for the record. Gee, Harold Duffy, City Manager. As Councilperson Robles and Mayor Pro Tem Wilson indicated, that they both met, along with the City Attorney and I, with the City of San Bernardino. During that meeting, the City of San Bernardino, City Manager and I had a discussion afterwards, and she will be looking at dusting off the MOU that they were developing with the Orange Show, and the city, so the City of San Bernardino does recognize, or they're saying that they have the enforcement authority over the Orange Show. So once they continue that process with the MOU, I'll come back to the council and report and update where we are in that process. In addition, we have on August 3rd, we have not only movies in the park, but we have Elvis movies in the park, and there will be an Elvis impersonator there, and the movie showing will be Jailhouse Rock, it'll be at the GT Fitness Park, and we encourage you to be there at 7:00 to enjoy the music, and also, the movie starts at 8:00. In addition, on Tuesday, August 6, 2019, from 5:00 to 8:30 PM, in the State of Brothers parking lot, is the National Night Out, hosted by the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. Parking Lot, is the National Night Out hosted by the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, our San Bernardino County Fire Department will also be there, along with our CERT team and other law enforcement-related activities. We encourage the community to come out to support law enforcement, and there'll be lots of food, fun, entertainment during that event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. We do have one closed session item tonight, excuse me, we have two closed session items tonight. So we will be recessing to discuss and confer with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to California Code Section 54956.9D4, one potential case, and also public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.6. City Manager, so if you are not here when we reconvene, our next regular City Council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 13, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing, submitted to the City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you so much for being here and for your participation. At this time, we are in recess. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to California Code Section 54956.9D4, one potential case, and public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54956.6. City Manager, there are no reportable actions, we do give direction to staff. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting to the next regular City Council meeting to be held Tuesday, August 13, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.